Good morning, everybody. This time I'll call the Monday, August 7th, '23 regular meeting of the Harney County Board of Commissioners to order and ask Commissioner Lewis Weatherston to lead us in the pledge allegiance in invocation.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Blessed be thy name, Holy Father, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you for another day that you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for Harney County and for all its citizens. Lord, we ask that you be with us as we go through this meeting and guide us and direct us in actions that we take in this meeting. Be with us throughout the day. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Well, good morning. I hope everybody had a wonderful weekend. We'll go ahead and get started. We'll consider any additions and deletions to the published agenda.
Move to approve the published agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We got a motion and a second in order to approve the published agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry your unanimously, Madam Clerk. Go here, motion for the consent agenda.
Need to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry unanimously as well. Right, this time I will now open the floor for public comment period. Public comment will consist of thirty minutes. Each presenter will have three minutes to speak. I have Ms. Elizabeth Longman up first.
I wanted to bring to the attention of the board a nomenclature issue. There is the Harney County Commission for Women and Youth. I'm very sure at the time of its establishment, you know, the issues of women was considered the issues of youth, but I hope that we are now more enlightened. And even if you read the description of the function of the board, women's issues are not children's issues. Women are adults just as much as men are. If the board wanted to create a women's board, it shouldn't be tied to the ability of our uteruses to reproduce. So if the board could reconsider the name of the Harney County Commission for Women and Youth, to create a commission for women and a commission for youth, reflecting that you're now more knowledgeable and more awake and aware, as they say, you're more woke to everything, and you will not lump the issues of women in this county to the issues of youth in this county. Those are two separate issues, completely separate issues, and it would be good if the board acted accordingly.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Mr. Allen Longman.
My name is Allen Longman, 234 Hamilton Road, Bonn Level. The reason I want to speak today is just a continuation of things in general. I would like to see a little bit more done to not utilize the government, or county government, to shore up people who are not so good at what they do at their job. I'm very surprised that there was a thing that you have a lawyer, county lawyer, to back and be made special to the Sheriff's Department. And I'm saying this, that, hey, look, what brought you together to try to bring this post to protect somebody who time and time again breaks the law or should be investigated and isn't? At least you should call for investigations of this man, because that's your responsibility, to call for investigations of all these things that are happening. I know Josh Stein has someone from Harney County in control of his office. Unfortunately, I see that as a get out of jail free card and nothing more than that. I don't think that his inquiry into the things that are going on here needs to take a look and investigate all these things that are happening. We have fraud being made with the paper that's supposed to be, hey, look, this is required in order to run for candidate, but it doesn't have a timestamp on it, meaning that the director and the sheriff may have committed fraud when he ran for the office. He may not even be able to have that office now. But the point is, they went, legislature went and put this in his file, so it's almost impossible to access it. To me, that's a cover-up, both by the legislation and by the people not looking to see the truth of this and present the evidence to court that needs to be done. In my opinion, he's not the sheriff because of that. It wasn't requirement, he just didn't bother to do it in time. I like investigations done instead of expanding the county to put people in to prop them up with legal issues when he had full access. Some of you were at the meeting where he broke the law, where he had an order of protection done, which he broke himself. He said openly in the Board of Elections meeting that he was the law. That's how he feels. So making a lawyer, especially for the sheriff, is expensive to the community and unnecessary. It shows that there's a problem in the sheriff's office. I don't like to have also the fox in the chicken coop running things. And the drug thing that I think you're putting him ahead of is exactly that. I think there's graft and crimes going on that are great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And last up, I have Cheryl Prince.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Cheryl Prince. I'm from Anderson Creek. Like, I hate to even have to come down here and address this issue, but it's not a secret. Harney County has a lot of chaos, animosity, and outright drama, and I'm going to focus on the emergency services stuff going on, particularly the county EMS and the fire departments in the western side of the county. I'm going to email you guys some stuff, a review from the Google site, as well as Glass Door reviews. The stuff that I read on there is terribly concerning. Like, I've heard nothing for years but negative things from people who leave the county. As far as why there's a high turnover rate, the mental stress, poor leadership, overworked, overall toxic work environment. Certain policies, like the no fraternization policies, are not being enforced. There is a lot of affairs, things like that, going on. Employees are overly invested in one another's personal lives. It's nothing but constant rumors against other departments, each other. The Sheriff's Department is where I hear everything from. They turn on each other, former spouses, former employees, and it's just fueling this, and it has been going on for years. Right now, there is a very public social media war between Anderson Creek, several county medics, and Ben Haven, with the fire chief at Ben Haven being harassed because of it. They have known for years about these problems, turned a blind eye, and, you know, they leave in droves because of this. Our skilled, experienced employees, they get tired of dealing with it. You know, my advice, hold those people in leadership positions accountable. Unlike the Sheriff's Department, you all hire and fire these people at the county level, and they're not doing their job efficiently if this is going on. Like, there's no peace. There's currently a civilian afraid to leave her home because of this and what they're doing to her. So, I mean, I hope you'll take it seriously, and I'll email you all of that stuff.
Thank you, ma'am. Right, at this time, I will now close the floor for public comment. We will now move on to item number six, having a public hearing concerning a proposed agreement to issue an appropriation of funds in the form of debt forgiveness to the Harney County Economic Development Partnership and the North Carolina Nonprofit Corporation, previously known as Harney County Properties Corp. Mr. Snow.
Good morning, Commissioners. At your work session last week, this matter was first introduced and put on the agenda today for a public hearing, in that the public was, most of the public was not at that meeting last week. I think it's in order, if you want me to, just to give a backdrop to where we are as far as this particular matter is concerned. So we'll go back to April 6th of 2020. At that time, the county commissioners adopted a resolution which authorized the conveyance of certain real property by private sale. The property that was at issue at that time was a 26.41 acre tract in the Brightwater subdivision, which has been identified as lots 6 through 16, eleven lots, of the Brightwater subdivision phase three. At that time, our economic development department had done some marketing analysis and gotten some appraisals on this property, showing a value of $1,567,500. Also, on April the 6th of 2020, the county and the Harney County Properties Corporation, which has since changed its name to the Harney County Economic Development Partnership, which I'll refer to as a partnership from here on out, entered into a property transfer and appropriation agreement. And in that agreement, the county agreed to sell to the partnership lots 6 through 16 for $1,567,500. At the closing, county financed this sale with a promissory note from the partnership to the county for $1,567,500 plus 3% interest from April the 20th, 2020 until paid. This note was secured by a first lien trust on the 11 lots held by the county. The game plan pursuant to this economic development initiative was that the partnership would take possession of these lots, improve, maintain, and market these lots for sale pursuant to the guidelines in the transfer agreement. Once sold, the partnership had the option of requesting debt forgiveness under section five of the agreement. And since this particular section is most appropriate for what we're doing today, let me just read that section to you. It's section five of the agreement, and it's entitled appropriation to the partnership. The Harney County Board may, in its sole discretion, on a case-by-case basis, choose to forgive the repayment of all or a portion of any payment on the debt evidenced by the note as an appropriation of funds to the partnership. Any such appropriation of funds shall be under the authority and in compliance with North Carolina General Statute, section 153-8-449. Such funds shall be used by the partnership solely for the public purpose of promoting and supporting economic development within the county. And then the section goes on to cite specific ways those funds can be used, which I won't go into those, but they all had to do with economic development in the county, basically. Fast forward to today, and the county has now been advised, as we were advised last week, that the partnership has entered into an agreement concerning this real property sale of certain property to the Harney Health System. And this is a situation where they've agreed to sell this property, lots, all 11 lots, to the Harney Health System for $1.7 million. As part of this process, the board of directors of the partnership have met, and they have made a proposal to the county last week that this debt that they have to the county for the $1,567,500 be forgiven in order that they can use those funds for further economic development matters. So that's what brings us to this board today. How do you want to deal with their proposal? And it also requires that if an appropriation is made, that we have a public hearing. This public hearing was advertised over ten days ago in the Daily Record, and we had the public hearing today. So that's what's before the board as far as your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, I will now open the floor for a public hearing regarding the proposed agreement to issue an appropriation of funds for debt forgiveness to the Harney County Economic Development Partnership. If anybody would like to speak on this matter, now is your time.
Elizabeth Longman, we all knew how shady boots this original deal was. We all knew. We know that that department has done nothing with Brightwater land over there, where CCCC and the hospital came. They have done nothing. And now the county has already appropriated in their budget this year $1 million and something dollars, okay? Now they're saying, we're about to make money on this land deal, but we don't want to meet our obligations. We want you to cancel our obligations. Wow. They will have enough money in that sale to pay their debt to the county. Can you imagine? You take a loan, those of you who are in real estate, you take a mortgage from the bank, and when you sell the house for a profit, you tell the bank, you're going to forgive my mortgage so I can keep all my money, and I've not shown you that I can do anything with it. They've done, you know, that's a department that has struggled in this county. If this was a minority-run organization, this board would not even be considering this. This is white privilege at its height, and we'll call it what it is. This is white privilege at its height. They have an obligation, this county, but it was already a very shady land deal. And if I remember, at that time, the county commission board was still over there in Lillington on Front Street over there. The place was filled to capacity with citizens, taxpayers, saying, you guys are corrupt. Not you all, but the commissioners at that time were entirely corrupt for doing these shady boots land deals. You're going to do what you want to, but don't think we don't know what this is. White privilege being exercised on the taxpayers' dime.
Anybody else like to speak?
Last question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is something I have been speaking about and speaking on for many years now. How many minorities are there? Only you. I used to serve on the board, and I spoke out many times about minorities. There are fifty-seven minority businesses in this county, and there may be more. They have come before this board, and they have given information of these businesses in this county. Not speaking out because... Not speaking out because Mrs. Longhorn spoke out, I'm speaking out because this is something I've been speaking out about for a long time. Now, I'm not against this, and let me make it clear, but just things have got to change, you know, not just for minorities, but for all of us, for all of us, because I don't understand why all the surrounding counties can get business and bring jobs in their county. But I've been sitting on this board since 2014, and I have not seen anything happen. That's all I got to say. And I'm saying it because I want to see a change. I want to see us provide jobs for our citizens. And until we change, we're not going anywhere. Now, we invest in this money, and I'm going to vote for it because anything that's going to help bring some more jobs here, I'm in favor of it. But we have put a lot of money out there, and in turn, we've got nothing in return for this money. So either we've got to change the direction of where we're going, seek our help. I mean, I look at Wake County, Lee County, all these counties, they do, they brace the minorities. I'm not even in brace, so I totally understand the problem. County is not built on one sector of people. And I apologize if I said anything to offend anyone, but I'm telling you how I feel. And I'm here to serve the people, and I serve all the people, all the people. I don't care who y'all are, what color y'all are, what ethnicity you are. So we've got to start, we've got to look at this stuff. And I'm talking to the board here. I'm talking to the board. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak during this public hearing?
Yeah, my name is Allen Longman, 234 Hamilton Road, Barn Level. I wanted to know why this wasn't important enough for Mr. Morris to listen to and have to forget up and not listen to a word that was said. Please explain yourself to why this doesn't mean anything to you. Thank you. It was rude.
Would anybody else like to speak during this public hearing? Seeing nobody move, I will now close the floor for a public hearing, and we'll move on to consider approving the proposed agreement to issue an appropriation of funds in the form of debt forgiveness to the Harney County Economic Development Partnership. We wait for a motion, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposed agreement to issue an appropriation of funds in the form of debt forgiveness to the Harney County Economic Development Partnership.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the proposed agreement to issue appropriation of funds in the form of debt forgiveness to the Harney County Economic Development Partnership. Any further discussion?
If you can make, Mr. Chairman, before you vote.
Yes, Mr. Snow.
Just to make it clear, when you say approve the agreement, you should have before you a proposed resolution which would authorize the issuance of this appropriation, and I would bring your attention to the page two, which is where the therefore be resolved to meet the coconut, so to speak, is there, just so you can be sure if this is, in fact, the quote agreement or not, which was proposed by the partnership board of directors. If I may add, just for the record, let me read this for you, since people in the audience don't have this document before them. So this resolution, as far as the resolve part, it reads as follows, since it now therefore be resolved by the Harney County Board of Commissioners, as follows, number one, pursuant to GS 153-449 and the property transfer and appropriation agreement dated April 6th, 2020, between the county and the partnership, the Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the issuance of an appropriation to the partnership in the form of the forgiveness of that debt evidenced by that note dated April 20, 2020, from the partnership to the county in the original amount of $1,567,500 plus 3% interest per annum from the date of the note until marked paid and satisfied by the county. This appropriation is made subject to the following conditions. A, the partnership shall close its real property conveyance transaction with Harney Health System, Inc., pursuant to that real property purchase and sale agreement dated April 27, 2023. B, at the time of the above reference closing, the partnership shall pay in full to the county that operational loan promissory note dated, and that should be December 14, 2020, from the partnership to the county in the original amount of $350,000 plus 2% interest per annum from the date of the note until paid. And at such time, the $1,567,500 note shall be marked satisfied, and the lien trust shall be canceled of record, and further, the operational loan note of $350,000 shall be marked satisfied. C, the partnership shall use the balance of its net proceeds from the sale to Harney Health System, Inc., for the purpose of promoting and supporting economic development in Harney County, and pursuant to the terms of the April 6th, 2020, property transfer and appropriation agreement, the terms of which are incorporated herein as part of this resolution. Number two, the Harney County manager is authorized to execute the note satisfactions and any other necessary documents to effectuate the appropriation through debt forgiveness. This language is tailored, basically, on the premise of the proposal made by the partnership. They are represented today, by the way, by their chairman, Phyllis Godwin, and also by one of its members, Jake Mays, who are here today with Angie Stewart from the Economic Development Department. So the key aspect of this, when you make, instead of making your motion to, quote unquote, approve the agreement, you should really be adopting this resolution if this is in keeping with what you want to do, obviously. But the protections are there. They want to close their deal with Harney Health System. They've got to give them a good deed to those lots. Right now, those lots are encumbered by your deed to trust based on that note for $1,567,500. So they can't give a clean deed unless they comply with the terms of these conditions, one of which is to pay off that $350,000 note, plus interest. So that'd be one obligation off their back. If you forgive the debt on this, that'd be that obligation off their back. And then the only other obligation they have to the county will be what's secured by the Edgerton Property Industrial Park over on the other end of the county. So they have that, and then they have the net proceeds from the sale to the Harney Health System of $1.7 million. They can use those funds to go forward and get involved in other projects or economic development in Harney County. Any questions on any of that?
So, sir, what you're asking, should we adopt this resolution along with the motion?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Just, Chair, me and my motion to recommend the approval of the proposed agreement that's outlined in the resolution of the Harney County Board of Commissioners regarding debt forgiveness to the Harney County Economic Development Partnership.
Second.
Got a motion and a second in order for a resolution, an amendment for the Economic Development Partnership for debt forgiveness. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is unanimously, Madam Clerk. Item eight, consider the applicants for appointment to the Social Services Board. We had two applicants last week, and another one had just come in, Mr. Joe Langley from District Three. We also have Craig McKinney and a, I don't have him in front of me, Mr. Ricky Day. Oh, entertain nominations for these three candidates.
I'll nominate Mr. Day.
Chair will nominate Mr. Craig McKinney. Are there any further nominations? I'll close the floor now for nominations, and we'll go take a vote. All those in favor for Mr. Day to be on the Social Services Board, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those in favor for Mr. Craig McKinney, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Three. Mr. Craig McKinney will be considered for this reappointment and be reappointed, Madam And moving on to the county manager's report, Mr. Trout.
Chair, I have certain items that are there presented as monthly reports, budget amendments, and need to request a motion to approve the budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director, and also a separate motion to approve tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the Tax Administrator.
Thank you, sir.
Move to, oh, the tax releases and the tax rebates and refund.
I have a motion to approve the tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the Tax Administrator. Second. A motion and a second to approve the tax rebates, refunds, and releases as requested by the Tax Administrator. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is unanimously. Do I hear a motion to approve the budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve the budget amendments. Do I hear a second? Chair will second. I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as requested by the Finance Director. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here is unanimously, Madam Clerk. Do we have a need for new business? No, sir. Do we have a need for closed sessions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.